Welcome, everyone, to the February 7, 2022 City Council Meeting. Please stand and salute the flag.
Roll call of the members. Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Fiori.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito is absent. Councilor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo is absent. Councilor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, and Council President Visconti.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of January 24.
So moved.
All in favor, all opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Calendar item number three: That certificates of appreciation be awarded to several individuals in recognition of their work at the Veterans Food Bank since the beginning of the pandemic in 2020.
Councilor Cogliandro, come on up, and we'll hand them up.
Thank you very much, guys. Thank you so much for being here tonight. So, I've been a part of the Veterans Food Bank now for two years, and thanks to the city's VSO, Mr. Silvestri, I didn't even know about it. I wouldn't have known about it if it wasn't for you, so thank you. But I've had the opportunity to work side by side with just about all of these people up here. These are the people that are helping to feed families every time that truck comes in, freezing our butts off or sweating our butts off on Wednesday mornings, now in the back of the building. But, you know, and they really, you guys have not asked for any recognition for this. You haven't asked for any recognition. And I wanted to make sure that I gave you some. Even you, Donna. I know she said not to, but, you know, this wouldn't run the way it does without you. So I want to thank you all for allowing me to be on this team with you. And I'm going to read these off, and we have certificates of appreciation for each one of you. There's Richard Savage. Kathleen Savage. Janine Sekela. Some of those, not everyone's up here. I'm going to give them to Donna. Ella De Prima. Carol Pisaferry. June Denine. Donald Boudreau. Vetsy Martinez. William Reedy. Sean Morris. John Coyne. Nicholas Rudolph. Mark Matheson. Oh, I don't know about this one. Oh, sorry. Donna Drezen. Thank you, guys, so much, and I'll see you at the next one.
Okay, back to the order of business. I'd like to request a suspension of rules for the purpose of taking up calendar number 28. Please.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 28: Motion presented by Councilor Fiori that the mayor be requested to appear before the City Council to explain why the taxpayers, as opposed to the city, are being charged 3% or more to pay taxes with a credit card.
Council Fiori.
Through you to Mr. Viskey. Thank you for appearing.
You're welcome.
I found it just kind of disturbing as I got calls from residents that, you know, people that really can't afford to pay their taxes are doing it via credit card, and they're getting hit with the 3% tax, 3% fee. And, you know, I mean, frankly, I know it's, we had just talked earlier, and it's about the last two years, it's roughly $300,000, $400,000 a year. And certainly a lot of money to us, but into a quarter-billion-dollar budget, it's really not a lot of money. You know, when the pizza shop owner sells a pizza for $12, he pays the 3%. So philosophically, I'm just wondering, the reason being, if it's just purely financial, that the city is asking the taxpayer to absorb the 3%. And I thank you for making a preemptive strike and coming up here tonight and was to request you, the mayor, for next week. But anyways.
Yeah, you're welcome. My pleasure. Richard Viskey, 281 Broadway, CFO.
Just to lay it out, that we had suspended the 3% pass-through charge card fee during the pandemic because of the difficulties it was doing business in City Hall. We were trying to steer people to online payments and credit card payments, et cetera. It was something that we hadn't budgeted for in the past, and it's, it was an amount that, we're talking calendar year here, for calendar year 2020, with the pandemic starting in March 2020, it was about $300,000. It was $337,000, actually, but that's the whole year. So $300,000 was the net charges from March through December 2020, that increased to over $400,000 in calendar year 2021. So it's quite costly to pick those fees up. For those who don't know, when you pay with a credit card in the store, that merchant, like Councillor Fiore says, does absorb that 3% fee, whether it's a mail or a pair of jeans or whatnot. But we're not allowed by law to take a net payment on taxes. We're required by law to receive the full tax receivable. We cannot waive any part of that bill. So there's two things that we can do. We can either pass along that service charge, which isn't really a charge that the city's giving to the taxpayer, but more so the credit card company for the use of their credit card, or we could absorb it. And we decided as an administration that we would suspend that and give proper notice to everybody on their tax bill, and then offer them the ability to pay with a debit card for free. There is a small charge for that. They can pay online, use an ACH payment, they can mail a check, they can use lockbox. So there's other ways to pay. It's just becoming quite costly to cover those fees, and it's only going to go up once people know that they can pay their taxes with these credit cards and, you know, reap the benefits of mileages on flights, et cetera. So I think it'd be great if we can absorb those fees, but you'd see this becoming a seven-figure budget line item as people found out about it more and more. So we, it made the tough decision to suspend that, and we're certainly getting calls on it as well, but I just wanted to let people know exactly what the fee is. It's not a fee we're charging. We don't get that money. It's just simply a fee that gets passed through as an interchange fee of the credit card. So I hope that answers your question.
You know, I understand where you're coming from. It just feels to me like, you know, the person that would be using a credit card would be the same person that's struggling to pay and probably paying an 18% credit card interest rate. You know, we've built thousands of apartments in this city, and there has to be enormous tax revenues coming in, yet taxes go up and we still whack the little guy, you know? And this isn't directed at you, but hiring practices in City Hall in recent years just keep going up and up and up, you know? And people could say that the tax rate has gone down. At the end of the day, it's A times B equals C. It's a direct reflection of the budget. So we keep spending, taxes keep going up, and we keep whacking the little guy. So, you know, this is just not something that I feel is right. I hear where you're coming from, and thank you for taking the time to come up here.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councillor Fiore. Councillor Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of questions to Mr. Fiore, I'm sorry, Mr. Viskey. Because I was, we talked about the fees and waiving the fees during the pandemic, which we did do, correct? Because, I mean, it was convenience related, but also we weren't allowing people in the building.
We waived them for around 21 months, from March 2020 to December 31st, 2021.
And I just, I mean, I pay online through ACH, as you mentioned, which obviously, you know, I understand. Are we getting calls with people saying we want to use our credit cards because we can't afford the taxes or don't have the funds to pay for the taxes? Or is there something, is there a workaround on that to help with these residents that potentially can't pay the taxes because of not having any funds and using credit cards to stretch that out? Or is it, do you think it's because people want to use a credit card out of convenience or because, I mean, listen, someone came to me the other day and said, I want to build, I used to get my air miles on it, and I get what you're saying. So I, college tuition. A friend of mine paid their college, their child's college tuition upwards of $50,000 a year in their credit cards. And then now the colleges got smart and said, hey, if you want to use your credit card, we're going to charge you for that. You know, otherwise you're going to have to pay with a check or different form of payment that they're not getting dinged for the service charge. So, I mean, what I'm saying is, are we getting a lot of calls, people saying they can't afford their taxes, and that's why they're using credit cards? Or is it the latter?
I mean, I won't classify it as one particular group. There are people who have financial struggles and they want to pay their taxes and they're being good stewards. There are the people that just didn't realize that they can use their same credit card as a debit card, and we try to steer them toward that. We try to steer them towards the online portal that you can use or ACH. But I think it's difficult to say that it's one group versus another group. I mean, it runs the gamut. So we're trying our best to educate them on how to pay without absorbing that fee. Some people, you actually explained to them that you're better off not paying your taxes and do a payment plan through the city because it's only 14%, not 18 or 25%. But...
That's what I was sort of getting at. I wanted to say is, are we giving them advice or trying to help people? Because that, I agree with Councillor Fiore. I want to try and help people, but I also don't want to enable people to take advantage of the situation either.
Oh, yeah, we're helping them. I mean, we've done so much as to actually hook some of the elderly up with our senior services to, even if we have to go out there and actually physically pick up a check or do something. And I was just having conversations with my collector this afternoon, talking about this, that I'd like to try to do some more of that, maybe mobile collecting of taxes and stuff, maybe using our City Hall V M. So, you know, these are things that I'd like to look at, but it just seemed that, you know, the $400,000, $500,000 a year, that budget for these fees is, I didn't think it was a prudent thing, and that's why we waived it. But it's not to penalize or hurt anybody, and it's not money that the city's seeing at all.
Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Viskey, Rich, I had a call with you about maybe two or three weeks ago. A resident called me up and said he got a parking ticket, and he paid with a credit card, and he got a 3% tax charge on his $20 parking ticket. So it is not only taxpayers, it's other departments, too, that are getting charged with this.
It's all credit card payments, whether it's a building permit, whether it's paying a parking ticket. It's one portal we have, and the pass-through fee is 3%, and it goes right to the bank.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Yeah, it sounds almost more disturbing after hearing what Councillor Keefe said. You've got universities that are charging $50,000 a year tuitions with billions of dollars in endowments, but they're whacking the poor kid, or the parents that are trying to go to school. I mean, you know, we, I haven't had a chance, obviously, to dig too far into the budget to see what's going on, but Councillor Fiore alluded to the fact that we have, now, I'm not really sure what it is. It's certainly close to a quarter of a billion dollars. And, you know, I think we have to start thinking about, what are we going to do for our residents? You know, we talked a couple of meetings ago about whacking our residents with fines and fees and all this other stuff that goes on. You know, we talked about parking meters and, you know, million dollars in fines, parking tickets, and so on. So, I mean, I think we should at least explore. I can't say for sure right now in this one meeting with one motion, but we should explore on maybe how to make this work. Where can we, you know, get money from? I know the city received about $30 million in COVID money. I just read in the paper, we hired somebody for some position, $125,000 a year. I mean, you know, when do we start thinking about our own residents and maybe a little convenience for them? You know, I mean, it has to extend outside the building. It's got to go to the people and try to help them out a little bit, because as much as the city wants to bring in their tax revenues, you know, going through these last couple of years, it's people outside that have suffered as well. The guy who's doing the pizza, the guy who's selling the jeans, they're also struggling. But they're, but they're taking in that, but they're, but they're absorbing that 3% fee. I mean, I just think we should at least start to have a discussion. This might be a launching point on how we can maybe make this work, factor it into the budget somehow, that if people want to pay by credit card, we're not whacking them on top of an already increasing tax burden that people are getting in general. So that would just be my opinion. I think it's, I think just for conversational purposes, I think we should be looking at it. Because, you know, certainly from a City Council perspective, you know, I think we all should be thinking, you know, how can we help our residents? What can we do? They've been through an awful lot, as much as the city has been through. It's the people out there, the residents in this community, they've suffered just as much as anybody in this building. And I think that we should, you know, certainly have a conversation about how we can, you know, maybe ease the burden on them a little bit. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Viskey, so as you said, when you walk into a convenience store and you see the little sign that says, you know, you can pay by credit card, but there's a minimum payment of at least $10. That's saying, so you don't go in, you don't buy a 99-cent water, you pay 99 cents with your credit card, and then the store ends up paying $2 for that water bottle, right?
Yeah, I believe that's illegal, but I'm not going to get into that. I don't think that's legal that you do that, but I've seen the same signs.
Well, what I'm getting at is, it's more or less, it's the credit card company that is putting that 3% on the person that's borrowing and using their machines and whatnot.
Yeah, that's a, you know, the 3% is strictly a pass-through fee. We, it's basically an agency account. We get the 3%, and we give, we don't even get it, actually. It goes directly to the credit card, bank processing.
So, so the only way to really get around that is eating the cost of everyone using their credit cards and allowing the credit card company to still charge the city a 3% fee, but the city would pay, then pay that, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we essentially did that for the last 21 months, and it cost us $700,000. So, I mean, it's a pretty staggering amount of money. And I don't disagree with Councillor Rizzo or Fiore. It's nothing we like doing, and it's not as if the administration hasn't done anything for the residents over this pandemic. I mean, we've done plenty of stuff. This just happens to be a mutually exclusive event that we're trying to bring in because we didn't budget a half a million dollars to pay for credit card fees. We didn't even know what this would, we didn't even know how much it was going to cost, but every month that goes by kind of goes up more and more because someone tells their friend, and someone tells their friend, and some of it, again, there's certain people that need it, and maybe there's some kind of amnesty program for low-income people and such, but I think other people are strategically paying with their credit card to reap the benefits of whatever rewards they got. So it's a tough balancing act.
Thank you.
Councillor Nowoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I understand where Councillor Fiore's coming from, but as we know that the city is not getting this money. And we have to realize that if we voted to pick up the tab, realize, as Mr. Viskey said, it's going to go into the budget, and overall people in the whole city are going to have to pay that portion of the budget of what we're paying into the credit card. So, you know, it is a catch-22 vicious circle, whatever you want to call it, but, you know, I know at least one company that tells you, they have that 3%, and it's, if you use the credit card, if you pay $400 for a service, you're going to have to pay that 3% charge extra, over and above. If you give them a check, it doesn't cost you that extra $40, $50. So I know it's something to look at, but, again, it's a tough situation, and, you know, do we want the overall taxpayers to have to pay for the credit card fees if we decided to pick it up? And here we go, $700,000.
Well, you constantly make an excellent point. Whether we pass along the fee to those people who are using the credit card or we absorb the fee, actually, at the end of the day, the taxpayers are paying either way because that money has to go into the budget. So some would argue that maybe the person using the card should pay the fee, as they use the fee like a water bill. But if, you know, if it's deemed that the entire tax base should be paying for those who pay with their credit card, you know, it's not as, it's not as cotton dry as it seems. And I guess, at the end of the day, we just thought it would be fairest to have those people who choose to pay with credit card absorb that fee because we can't take a net tax payment or a net building permit fee, et cetera.
Councillor Sorina.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Viskey. This is just more of a comment, actually, more of a comment to the entire council, too. I got a call on this late last year where a resident in Ward 6 had informed me, and I did some research, and Revere isn't the only city that does this. You know, Chelsea, Everett, I believe Malden, too. If you pay online with a credit card, you are hit with the 3% fee. So it's not, it's not that we're doing anything that other communities aren't doing. That's number one. But I just wanted to piggyback off of Councillor Keefe. We seem to be on the same wavelength tonight. But I did get a call recently from a resident who, when I advised them to pay by check, they said, you know, I don't have that much money in my account to pay for my taxes. And I would just hope maybe we can have a further discussion of how, if residents can't afford and they're relying on a credit card, to maybe to try to work with them a little more so than we have been doing. So that would just be my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I will certainly look into like an amnesty-type program, but there are certain people that are certainly struggling that need to use that credit card, but it's certainly not meant to make their lives more difficult. This is more of a, you know, citywide financial decision to, you know, again, we can spend $700,000 on probably a lot of things than absorbing these fees, but that's a story for another day.
One last comment from Councillor Fiore.
Mr. President, first of all, this is a motion requesting the mayor appear. Nobody's requesting action tonight. Secondly, I'm not suggesting that the taxpayers...
This is going into committee anyway.
Right, and I would recommend it goes to Ways and Means Committee. And I'm not suggesting, suggesting the taxpayers absorb it. I'm suggesting stop spending, stop creating $100,000 a year jobs. And I know that's no reflection on you, you know? But enough is enough, you know? Let's scale it back. We don't need to be making directors over directors. So that's where I'm coming from. I'm not coming from, I'm the last guy that would say, put it on the taxpayers. Stop spending.
Okay. Okay. If I may, like I said, this is going to go into committee. I think the city has done a good job trying to work with the residents and giving them different abilities to pay. And I, too, feel for the residents, especially the seniors, that are probably putting it on their credit card because they don't have the cash at hand. So, and they don't want to absorb the late fees and the liens if it gets late. So I respect that. I think it needs further discussion. I think it's, I think we could put that into Ways and Means, and I want to thank you for addressing the council this evening.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ways and Means.
Next up is calendar item number four, Public Safety Subcommittee Report.
All right, so if we can have a suspension of rules, we're on suspension. So we'll take up order number 27?
Calendar item number 27, motion presented by Councillors Fiore and McKenna, that the mayor request the Traffic Commission to remove the parking meters from the Central Avenue municipal parking lot.
Mr. President? Councillor Fiore? You know, Mr. President, really didn't have any questions because Mr. Viskey was kind enough to answer them last week, or the last meeting. You know, my understanding is $200,000 citywide is collected in parking meters, and about $1 million is handed out in parking tickets. I understand the needs in Broadway and Shirley Haven. I'm not asking to address that right now. But as far as the central lot, far as I'm concerned, it's hurting businesses, businesses that have already suffered during the pandemic. And again, why are we nickel and diamond the little guy? In a $250 million budget or more, I just don't think it's right that we continue to hit people with fees, fines, penalties, and, you know, parking meters. So for the good of the public, I would ask the mayor to kindly recommend to the Traffic Commission to remove the meters from the Central Avenue parking lot.
Miss, Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just a little upset that the city put in parking meters, and this is in my warden. I wasn't even told. It was just done, and that was it, and I didn't even know about it. So I was just a little bit upset about that. But the thing is that we have residents, and I hate to say this, and I've been saying this for, you know, but we have residents that abut the parking lots, this parking lot, Essala Court and Central Ave, and they park their cars there, you know? They don't have much room, they don't have, you know, they have this little street with a couple of houses on there. a couple of houses on there. They have no place to park now. They have to pay for their parking.
Okay, I mean-
Hold on for one minute, and then I know we talked about the seniors, but the seniors park there, too, to go into the senior center for their, you know, recreation, so, and I know you don't, you don't let the seniors pay, but what if they were going to the bank or something, you know, walking to the bank, and they couldn't park there? I mean, I've gone to Citizens Bank, and I couldn't even park there at points, so I had to park in the municipal parking lot to, to go. Businesses, we have, at night, usually people go to Valaris or wherever. We have the Revere City Hall Parking Lot that's free. We have the Citizens Bank that is free. There's plenty of parking spaces for them. This municipal parking lot has never had meters in it, never, you know? Football games, people park there. I mean, I don't think we should be charging people to park there. That's just my opinion.
That's, that's fair. I just want to let you know that it wasn't the decision of the administration, the Parking and Traffic Commission are the ones that allowed for meter parking there. That lot, quite frankly, was a wreck. For years, we've actually went in there, cleaned it up, put resident, we have business districts parking there for our businesses, $100 for a year, they can park for a year. We've sold 60 of those passes already. The meters are charged at half the rate of the street meters so that there is maybe some desire to park in that lot and create more capacity on the streets. So, I mean, this isn't the nickel and dime balancing the budget on this. This is a way to clean up a lot that was otherwise in terrible condition and bring some order to it, and we're proposing to reinvest that money back in the community with a parking benefits district. So, you know, I just, I just don't like to hear the rhetoric that this is balancing the budget on this money. We're actually trying to do goodbye to the city to do this.
No, he isn't. Let's go.
Mr., can I just finish?
Misinformation, and I'm sorry. I'm not trying to be out of order.
No, he's, he's not. Mr. Viskey, I just want to say that I think, when I know, when I first became a counselor, there was money allotted for that lot to be cleaned up, and it was never cleaned up. And I think I put a motion in for that money to be spent to be cleaned up, and it was never cleaned up. So, but there was a proposal to clean, money aside, to clean that lot up, a couple of hundred thousand dollars to clean that lot up, so, and it was never cleaned up. So, I just, I just want to put that out there.
Yeah, I'm on a way. I wish, I wish there was a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I don't even know if you were working.
I'd use it in a hurry if I knew where it was.
I, I don't even know if you were working back then, were you?
I don't know. I, I'm not familiar with it, but really, the intent is to try to make that municipal parking lot serve the business and the community well, so.
Okay.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, you know, it's my own personal opinion on parking meters. In fact, back between 2012 and 2016, we removed probably 20 or 30 meters that were around here, make it easier for people to do business in City Hall. That's the reason we knocked the police station down, to create 30, 40, maybe even a little more than that, parking spots, you know, to accommodate people, especially as you have more and more people moving into the city. So, it, to me, it's, it's like not the financial burden, and it's not the balancing the budget. That's not how I feel about it. I feel about it, it's just an inconvenience. I mean, you've got two streets in the entire city that have parking meters, Broadway and Shirley Ave. That's it. Two streets. I mean, you know, you could, if it, if it were up to me, if I was the person making the decisions, I would take every parking meter out of this city. We, we don't need it. You can put one-hour parking, 20-minute parking, 30-minute parking. I understand the whole reasoning behind the meters. You don't want people to park, take a space in front of a business, hop on the bus and go into Boston for eight hours, right? That, to me, is the ultimate reason why you'd really want to have a parking meter. Not so someone's got to pull out a credit card and have to put 25 cents in the meter to run into Papa Jack's or Polo Royal or something, you know? It's not, it's not the $200,000, I don't think, that the city sits around and waiting, you know? I mean, I think, I think back four or five years ago, we, we had lost $80,000 that was found in an audit of uncollected parking revenues that I guess should have been collected. In fact, that's a whole nother issue where a couple people were, but that's a whole nother story. The city never suffered because of that. The city never financially went downhill because of that 80,000 that was missing. So, you know, personally, I think just having a ticketing process without any meters, so people can pull up, not have to, you know, you see poor women going in their pocketbook, you know, guys reaching in their pocket trying to find change, you know, worst-case scenario, you know, pawed a credit card, now you're trying to fiddle around with it and figure out how much time, you know? I, I just think, that would be my opinion. Now, that, I can't make that call myself, but if the, if the, if the motion is on the calendar, I just want to have it known, to me, two streets in the entire city that have parking meters, and again, coming down to people that have businesses, that have, you know, I mean, I know, you know, like, there's people, and actually, it's almost worse because there's people that, that actually take the spots, they work here, and they run out every hour or two, or whatever it is, and keep feeding the meter. That's not helping anything either. That's not allowing for people to go and park if they want to stop and purchase something on Broadway. So, I don't know, to me, I, you know, that's just food for thought, Mr. Viskey. I would, I would, you know, whether it's the Traffic Commission, I mean, I have to believe the administration itself has some say in the Traffic Commission. They're not going to arbitrarily say, we're going to put meters here and meters there. There's got to be a say, you know, with the administration, so that would be my message. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Counselor, if I may, I just, I, I agree that the feeding of the meters for businesses is a problem, and that was one of the reasons why we created the Business District parking in that central lot so that you can pay $100 for a pass and not feed that meter so that people could actually use those meters that are doing business in the, in the Broadway businesses. So, I agree with you there, and I've certainly seen no meters in, you know, time and cars and enforcing that way, but since we put the new meters in, and we're able to pay with their credit card, we're able to pay with an app, we're able to pay with coins, we've got mostly positive feedback from the meters, and we certainly, and create the meters, we just kind of enhanced them and, and have better control over the dollars and computerization and such, but I understand your points. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's not forget that, like Mr. Viskey said, that central lot, parking lot also is used by people that are out of the city, that come park that, park their car there, and take the bus to go into Boston. So, that's being utilized by them as well, and I'd have a problem with out-of-city people utilizing our parking lot without paying. That's first and foremost, but I do understand, you know, where Counsel Fiori is coming from as well. You know, and, you know, let's not forget that I think the, the parking on Broadway is, is not done to nickel and dime the, the residents. I think it's used there for turnover as well. I think, you know, so that cars just aren't parked there for the entire day, and, you know, utilizing that spot to assist, you know, if that spot is taken all day, well, that spot's taking up a spot, you know, to go into, for, for a patron to go into Papa Jack's as well. So, there's two ways of looking at that, and I just, we'll refer this to the Traffic Commission, and let's not- We're going to refer this to-
Well, that point of parliamentary procedure, the chair-
All in favor, all in favor, all opposed.
Roll call.
Okay? All in favor, all opposed.
Roll call.
I'm not going to give the roll call.
Well, you're required to. Under the rules of parliamentary procedure, when a member requests a roll call, you have to give a roll call. So- Would you allow me to make one more statement before you made the roll call?
No.
Just want to refer, I, just-
Let's, let's do a, let's do a roll call motion.
If you, I just want to, well, I got the mic in, if you don't mind, just to let the people know at home, the public, especially the elderly, that even though there's only, I think, seven spots dedicated for senior center over at the lot, anytime there's an event or anytime any senior needs a park, and we have printed out passes for those individuals to park in that lot for free, so just want the public to know whoever's watching, so thank you for that.
And, um-
Counsel McKenna.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm not trying to give you a hard time. I'm just saying, but, you know, if people are parking there, everybody has a sticker in the city, whether if it's an overnight sticker, or it's a red sticker, or a blue sticker, everybody in the city has a sticker to park. So, I mean, you could go into that parking lot with the police, and if they don't have the sticker on their car, whether it's overnight, you'll know that they're, you know, they're non-residents.
Yeah, we actively, we actively patrol that lot every night, and, and it's exactly what we do, and that's-
Okay.
-how the purpose of why we, we did what we did, but I agree. We want to keep that lot safe and enforced, and, and for the residents and the businesses.
Do I have a motion on the floor to take a roll call for the roll call?
There's no motion necessary. There's a roll call requested. The chair-
It doesn't have to be granted. It does not have to be granted.
Parliamentary procedure requires you to that, to do that. I would suggest you read up on it. Roll call, it's a very simple thing. We're asking to submit, asking the mayor to request the Traffic Commission-
It's going to go to Traffic. I already said that.
No, the Traffic Commission.
I, I said it's going to Traffic. Did you listen?
I was listening, but the request is that it goes to the mayor.
It's, it's going to the Traffic Commission. That's where it belongs. Thank you.
So, is somebody, somebody amending the motion?
End of discussion.
Is there a member amending?
There wasn't any, Counsel Fiori, there wasn't any acceptance of the other motion, so it's going to the Traffic Commission. Thank you.
Roll call. You're required to give a roll call, Mr. President.
Not if everybody else does not, oh.
That is not the case.
It doesn't seem to be the consensus of the council.
That is not the case. One member can request a roll call.
No, yes, and I have the ability to grant it.
What, under which rule is that?
Under the rules, yes.
Under which?
Read the rules.
I have.
Okay, I have, too.
I studied them for a long time.
Well, study them again.
Which rule is it?
Thank you. Study them again, and come back and say, I apologize.
Okay.
Mr. President-
Back to the regular order of business. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a question of information through you to the clerk, because, truthfully, as long as I've been here, if someone asks for a roll call, they get a roll call vote. Now, is that, you have to ask for a roll call to get a roll call vote?
It's my understanding, I had done some research in Demeter's Manual, which is what the city council uses when, if it's not discussed in the rules itself. I had prepared something for Council President Biscanti. If there's any question, he doesn't have to grant the roll call, but if the board wants to take a roll call to entertain Counselor Fiori's motion to have a roll call, then they can do that. So, it's a roll call to take a roll call.
But how do you get to the point to take the roll call? If he asks for a roll call on the roll call, can he do that?
Yeah.
And then it has to go through a roll call?
Yes.
Was it white?
But if the roll call, but if the board does not want to take a roll call, then they don't have to take a roll call.
But how do you know unless you take a roll call if the board wants it?
Right.
Counsel Fiori did. Counsel Fiori didn't ask for a roll call? I, I don't know. We're- Right, and you asked, is there a roll call on the roll call? Which sounds crazy, but he did say, right, right.
But it's in the rules. It is in the rules.
Well, maybe we'll get some clarification for next meeting if we can, just for sure, because we don't want to go through a whole year of roll call on roll calls and-
I, I understand.
Point of affirmation, please. If, if the Traffic Commission was, were the ones that granted the meters, then we should have the mayor up here instead of putting it in, instead of putting it in front of the Traffic Commission, because they were the ones, Mr. Viskey said, the city had nothing to do with it, was the Traffic Commission that ruled this, because I didn't know. So, if, why are we putting it back with the Traffic Commission if they already ruled to put these in?
Because it's the decision to take them out.
Okay.
That's why. Next motion. Yes.
Next up is the Public Safety Subcommittee Report.
Counsel Serena.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, the Public Safety Subcommittee had a meeting, and we discussed the City of Revere's Hazard Mitigation Plan, and L. Baker from the administration gave a presentation. Basically, the hazard mitigation plan is a plan for natural disasters, floods, snowstorms, stuff like that, natural disasters, and it is required by FEMA to, to have updated plans every, every five years. So, we adopted that in the Public Safety Subcommittee, and I would ask for a roll call for the entire city council to concur with that. Thank you.
So, we'll take a roll call. Shall the city council approve the relative, relative to the municipal hazard mitigation plan? Please do.
On the hazard mitigation plan, whereas natural and human-caused disasters may occur at any time, we recognize that to lessen the impacts of these disasters, we will save resources, property, and lives in the city. And whereas the creation of a hazard mitigation plan is necessary for the development of a risk assessment and effective mitigation strategy, and whereas duly noticed public meetings were held on March 3, 2021, and October 7, 2021, and whereas the city is committed to the mitigation goals and measures presented in the plan, therefore, the city hereby adopts the Revere Massachusetts Hazard Mitigation Plan 2022 Update. Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fiori?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Not here.
Is absent. Counselor Morabito is absent. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Serena?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Biscanti?
Yes.
Yes, the hazard mitigation plan has been adopted. Calendar item-
Mr. President, point of personal privilege.
So, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize. Counselor Morabito texted me a little while ago, and he just asked that I relay to the members and to the public that he is absent tonight because within one week he lost his sister and his grandmother. So, I believe they had his grandmother's funeral today, and that's why he is not able to be here. So, as a body, we extend our sympathies, and he just asked that I relay that. Thank you.
Mr. President, actually, at this moment, we, I would, I would request that we take a moment of silence for the Morabito family.
Next up is the Appointment Subcommittee Report.
Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier today, the Appointment Subcommittee met. We had four items on the agenda. The first item was kept in committee. The other three, Leila Petrie to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Board of Trustees, Nicholas Rudolph to the Conservation Commission, and Megan Simmons-Herling to the Planning Board, were all voted out unanimously by the Subcommittee.
If there's no objection, I'd like to take this up. Shall the city council confirm the appointments brought up by Counselor Cogliandro? If no one objects, I'd like to take them all up at once.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If we might begin the practice of taking them up separately, I know in previous years we take them up all together, but I just think it might be good practice to take them up separately. Thank you.
All together.
Shall the city council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairman Cogliandro? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fiori?
I thought, are we doing this?
Serena asked to take them separately.
Hey, we can do that individually, yeah.
All right, I'm sorry.
Shall the city council confirm the appointment of Leila Petrie to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fiori?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito is absent. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor- Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Serena?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, that appointment has been confirmed. Calendar item number seven, shall the city council confirm the appointment of Nicholas Rudolph to the Conservation Commission? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fiori?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito is absent. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Serena?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Nicholas's appointment has been confirmed. And, calendar item number eight, shall the city council confirm the appointment of Megan Simmons-Herling to the Planning Board? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fiori?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito is absent. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Serena?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, this appointment has been confirmed. Calendar item number nine, communication from the Election Commissioner requesting feedback on polling locations in the City of Revere.
This is, uh, gonna get referred to the Committee of the Whole, uh, in this meeting, will be held, uh, on our next, uh, city council meeting, February 28th.
Calendar item number 10, communication from the mayor requesting an amendment to the revised ordinances of the City of Revere relative to drain layers.
Refer to, uh, pub, this is gonna be, uh, referred to a public hearing on February 28th.
Calendar item number 11, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Brian Averbach to the Conservation Commission.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 12, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Joseph LaValle to the Conservation Commission.
Appointments. Oh.
As, Joe LaValle's been a member of the, chairman of the Conservation Commission under possibly four or five administrations. I would just ask for a special dispensation, we all know him, he's a science teacher, um, to, uh, to approve that tonight, um, and... So I would, I would move to approve Mr. LaValle tonight.
Mr. President?
Counsel Serena?
If I might, although I know Mr. LaValle too, and with all due respect to the counselor from Ward 5, I just don't think it would be appropriate if we start giving certain appointments special treatment. I, I respect him, I totally understand, but I just think, you know, all appointments should go through the same process. That's just my, my feeling on it.
I think it should-
I agree.
I just think it should be noted that, uh, when the entire Conservation Commission walked out and resigned, Mr. LaValle came back, um, to chair the commission, and I don't even know that he was, um, looking to do that. So, you know, if it's the will of the council not to take it up tonight, um, disappoints me, but it is what it is.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 13, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Heather Legear to the Conservation Commission.
Appointments.
Motions, calendar item number 14, motion presented by Counselor Novoselfsky that the mayor request planning and community development to pursue state grant funds in the Shared Streets and Spaces Program for the purpose of applying for a raised crosswalk on Campbell Ave. at the public stairs. Additionally, that portable speed bumps for spring, summer, and fall weather be installed on Campbell Ave., Upper Centennial Ave., the long end of Hitchborne Street, and various locations on Garfield Ave. and Standish Road between Elliott Road and Curtis Road.
Counsel Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, um, I got, uh, an email from Mast Dot that this program is available, and when I saw some of the things that they were providing, I thought, whoa, this is a great opportunity for the city to take advantage of some of the problems that we're having on our side streets. Now, I know I only listed my streets in Ward 2, because those are the main streets that we're having problems with, and I'm sure every ward councillor and every councillor at large has the same situation on many other streets. But I just want to bring this to the attention of the mayor, and planning and development, and maybe the Traffic Commission, that we apply for this, these funds. It's free money. It's a good opportunity to make our streets safe, and protect our neighborhoods, and the residents, and the kids going to school. So, you know, I hope this is approved as it is for now, and anybody wants to, uh, put their own motions in in the future, I welcome that to them too. Thank you.
No question. Counsel Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a great motion. I actually have a, a motion coming up later tonight, uh, about speeding problems on Proctor Ave. This, this might be a great idea for that, too. So, great motion. Thank you.
I think it's a great idea. I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote favorably on the motion, I support it. I, I had always heard many, many years ago that, oh no, because of snow plowing and things like that, you can't have raised sidewalks, you can't have speed bumps on the public roadways, and it kind of made sense to me at that time. Although, as I drive around other cities, you do see raised sidewalks, you do see speed bumps. So apparently, it's not a legality issue, it's a matter of wanting to do it. My only fear, and I'm just gonna say this now in case it goes down the road for further conversations, because right now Counselor Novoselfsky has it, and I know Counselor Cogliandro's gonna be, you know, he's talking later on on a motion about speeding, and, which is, which is all great. I think we have to be careful. I don't want this to cert, to turn into a city of speed bumps and raised sidewalks. So I think we've gotta be, if we're gonna vote on them, I think we need to be selective on where we're gonna wind up putting them, so it doesn't turn into all 11 of us are coming up every week, yeah, put speed bumps over here, put a raised sidewalk over here. I think then, then it will get out of control. So if we're gonna start to do it, I think we need to be somewhat selective in how we're gonna go forward and do it. That's my only comment on that, but I, I do support the motion.
Counsel Keefe?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. You know, Counsel Rizzo makes a good point, because, you know, I'm one, all the ward councils are gonna want to jump on, and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll want them everywhere because we want to protect our residents. You know, uh, if you've watched me over the last four or five years, I've asked for raised crosswalks since probably day one. So I just want to see the City of Revere, like Counselor Novoselfsky mentions, take that first step. It doesn't have to be Ward 1, doesn't have to be Ward 4, that Ward, you know, we want to see the city take their first step, because they are in other communities, they are proven to, to add to, uh, the safety of our residents, especially the pedestrians, and that's all we want to do. Now, and if they don't work, we do one or two, and we realize that they're a, a, a big mistake, then we have the opportunity to, to correct that. But, you know, I drive through Everett, I drive through Cambridge, Somerville, et cetera, they seem to be working, especially in those high-traffic areas with lots of students. You know, I'm just gonna throw it out there, Counsel Novoselfsky, I think in front of Hill School would be the perfect spot to test that first raised crosswalk. Thank you.
I, I support the motion. There's been requests to put, uh, speed bumps in the high school area. I think we should start with school zones, and, uh, I, you know, I've had requests in the Riverside, people just come off the highway and come bombing around, uh, Mills Avenue, so I would ask that, um, there'd be an amendment to, um, ask for school zones to be looked at.
Are you okay with the amendment?
Yeah, I, I don't mind that, Mr. President, through you. I just don't want this, this one to get watered down too much.
Agreed.
You know, so, uh, if we want to add school zones only, and stop it there, I will-
Yeah, I understand. I understand that, I think school zones would give the place-
Because actually, this is in a school zone anyways, in Garfield Ave., that's part of it.
No, I, I think, like I said, I've had requests at Revere High School area as well, East Mountain Ave., so I would just amend it to include school zones.
Counsel, do you want to put in a separate, uh, motion?
If there's no objection, I'd just ask for the amendment.
For now, you know, like I, I had asked for originally that everybody put their own motions in for where they want, but, you know, for, just for school zones, like, you know, and this is already one included, you know, you only have, what, four or five others they have to deal with, so.
Okay. All in favor, all opposed? As amended? So ordered? Next motion?
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Counselors Cogliandro and Serena that the mayor request the Traffic Commission to amend Schedule 4 of Title 10 Isolated Stop Signs by removing Conan Street for northeast-bound and southwest-bound traffic at the intersection of Remney Road. Further, that the DPW be directed to remove the stop sign upon approval of the amendment by the Traffic Commission.
Counsel Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone who has driven down Remney Road has gotten to the intersection of Remney Road and Conan Street to realize that it's a one-way pointed in both directions. And speaking with Counselor Serena, where he now oversees part of, uh, Conan Street, we felt it might be, uh, better for the stop sign to be removed for better flow of traffic there. Thank you.
Counsel, no? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor direct the chief of police to increase patrols on Proctor Avenue. This neighborhood continues to be affected by speeding.
Counsel Cogliandro?
Speaks for itself.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Counselor Serena that the mayor request National Grid to install a street lamp on Pole 2793 in front of 58 Carlson Ave. Years ago, a car took down the pole, and when the pole was replaced, the street lamp never got replaced.
Counsel Serena?
Thank you, Mr. President. Pretty much speaks for itself. I would just ask the clerk to amend it to say, um, after install, just put install a 48-watt street lamp, just to denote the wattage. Aside from that, speaks for itself.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered? As amended?
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Counselor Serena that the mayor request National Grid to lower the wattage of the light in the street lamp on Pole 2591 in front of 60 Kingman Ave. The current wattage is shining in the neighbors' homes and has become a nuisance.
Counsel Serena?
If we could also just include 48 on that one, and speaks for itself.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counselor Serena that the fire chief appear before the city council's Public Safety Committee to discuss the state of the Revere Fire Department's fleet of trucks and their maintenance. Residents in Ward 6 have been inquiring regarding Engine 3's use of a Chelsea fire truck in recent weeks and months.
Counsel Serena?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the motion pretty much speaks for itself, but I did receive an email from Chief Bright right before tonight's meeting, and if, if it's okay with the council, I would like to read his response. He did kind of, um, send over an explanation, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, so he said, "Dear Counselor Serena, I'm unable to attend the Public Safety Subcommittee meeting tonight, um, but I just wanted to send over that. Over the past several months, we have experienced a rash of mechanical and safety system breakdowns concerning our fire apparatus. We put in emergency allocations to cover some of the work. Engine 4 and Engine 5 have been repaired and are back in service. Engine 3, which is in North Revere, and Engine 1 on the Parkway are still out for repairs, but hopefully, we should have them back in service within a couple of weeks. As you know, we do not have the budget or capacity to do much mechanical work in-house in the city. Compounding matters is the COVID pandemic creating a shortage of mechanics, parts, et cetera. Consequently, residents may continue to see Malden, Boston, or some other neighboring communities' fire apparatus in use in Revere for the immediate future. I have been borrowing apparatus so that we are not placing them out of service, which was the common practice before I became the fire chief. Lastly, we have two pumper trucks on order that should be delivered and ready to be put in service this summer." So that's the response from the fire chief. I mean, I think it pretty much explains what's going on, uh, but I, I do have a few further questions that I, you know, will try to bring up with him, so maybe if we could stick this in public safety and, you know, and down the road, we can have him before the, uh, committee. Thank you.
May I offer a couple of amendments?
Counsel Fiori?
Amending it to read the, uh, report on the status of the Point of Pines Fire Station, and to discuss the ambulance situation in the city, things I've heard quite a bit.
Sure, I would be okay with amending it and including Counselor Fiori as a co-sponsor.
Okay, this is gonna get referred to Public Safety? All in favor, all opposed? As amended? So ordered?
Count, just to be clear, that was a request to send to, is that going to Public Safety? Okay. Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Counselor Serena that the mayor request Overlook Ridge and Mast Dot to provide the city with an update regarding the eventual reconfiguration of the entrance to Overlook Ridge and access to Route 1.
Counsel Serena?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, when I took office in 2020, right before the pandemic, uh, there had been plans with Overlook Ridge and with Mast Dot with regard to once, uh, building in Malden, on the Malden side of Overlook Ridge was completed, they were gonna be reconfiguring the entranceway on Salem Street and, uh, onto Route 1. They were gonna be creating a new on-ramp or whatnot. Uh, obviously, I think the pandemic has kind of slowed things, but it would just be good to get an update where it's been two years, so that's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Counsel Rizzo?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counsel Serena, for putting this motion in. I know that's a, a big part of your ward, and I'm sure the people up there appreciate it, and I'm sure potentially, the pandemic may have slowed it down a little, but I don't know what slowed it down prior to the pandemic, since seeing as they've been talking about this since 2001. So, this has been an ongoing discussion from the management at Overlook Ridge that had promised a diamond interchange that was going to straighten Route 1 north and take people out of that site, and bring them over Route 1 and into the southbound lane. This was presented to the city when their project was approved, and it's disgraceful, as far as I'm concerned, that you're forced as the new, as the ward councillor, the third, I think, wa, third ward councillor since this project started, that it has to land in your lap, that we're still talking to them about something that this city granted them permission to do in 2001, and they have not delivered on it. So, I, I'd like to see the, I, I would absolutely like to see management from Roseland Properties, or whoever currently owns the property, appear before the city council and tell us what their plans are. It can't be this city council, or any city council in the futures, um, uh, plan to approve a project where you're promised something, promised, as part of their plan, and then have them not deliver and take no action against them. We were promised a mixed-use development up there, which we don't have. Forget the traffic plan. So, um, I would absolutely like to see management appear here before the city council. We, you know, this city council, we, if we don't respond to things like this, that, you know, anyone will come in and tell us what they want to do, and not feel any obligation to do it, because they know we're not gonna hold them to the fire. So, we, you know, if, 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 if any city council approves a project, and there is a design plan that comes with it, and promise is made in a special permit, it needs to be delivered on, or there needs to be some sort of action by the city council. That's my feeling, anyway, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having been involved in this from day one with Overlook Ridge, who I am totally disappointed with, as Counsel Rizzo stated, they did make total promises for us, but it was, I don't want to take the wind out of anybody, but over the years, they were supposed to start the project on redeveloping that new ramp system in 2009, and it was supposed to have been finished in 2014, and here we are in 2022. But since then, you know, monies were put in a transportation bond bill by Governor Patrick, which he never utilized, and he killed the project, to say the least. If there's another plan to do another ramp system coming off Salem Street, I'm unaware of it, but I know Overlook Ridge was supposed to put a hotel next to the fire station where the parking lot is, and that was in 2010. Again, here we are, 12 years later, and we're still holding our breath. Very disappointed in Overlook Ridge, and, you know, I know there were some things that went through them, through the current counselor, and, you know, through the Traffic Commission, which I was totally disappointed, and I would have gone against them if it wasn't for the safety of the people in Ward 6. But I know that's, the transportation bond bill money was totally eliminated, and I think it was like $20 million involved, and Governor Patrick wouldn't even let the project go forward, just for the design, let alone the actual work. So what more can I say? Total disappointment. Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Next motion.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Councilors McKenna and Keith that the mayor be requested to communicate the city's concerns to Congresswoman Catherine Clark relative to 5G antennas with, within a two-and-a-half-mile radius of Logan Airport. The FAA and recent data has shown that 5G antennas can disrupt flight instruments on airplanes. Beauchamp is directly under the flight path from Logan Airport, and any airplane interference from 5G antennas would be catastrophic for this neighborhood.
Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I would like to read the new data to the public, but this is a really serious problem, and it's only surfaced in the last three months, and it's, it's really concerning for Beauchamp. So I just want to read some data to you. C-band is a set of radio frequencies that deliver long-range and faster data from the big internet companies. It's also used by aircraft radars, which essentially use, is used for safe flying. For months, the FAA has warned that the C-band phone networks could distribute, disturb, and scramble aircraft radar, making it dangerous at night for planes to land. Beauchamp is continuously used for landing and departing in inclement weather, and aircrafts fly over Beauchamp at all hours of the night. Emirates Airlines, for one, has suspended flights to the US, to US destinations, but this does not include Logan Airport. Several other major foreign carriers, including ANA, Japanese, Japan Airlines, and Air India also suspended flights to the US, even though wireless carriers AT&amp;T and Verizon agreed this week they would not switch on the C-band service near some of the US airports. Logan Airport is not one of them, and it has not made the list. Verizon and AT&amp;T has heavily advertised its 5G ultra-wideband systems, claiming it would soon be available for 100 million people in the US, including residents of greater Boston. But the frequencies are very close to the ones used by the radar, by the radar altimeters on planes, which use a radio signal to measure the distance to the ground and are vital for landing in the dark and inclement weather. Interference from C-band towers could make some radar, radar altimeters dangerously inaccurate. This could be a catastrophe, God say it, catastrophe, catastrophe for Beauchamp, sorry. I am, I'm asking Mira Rego to communicate these findings and concerns to Congresswoman Clark, so she can start the process in legislation to prohibit these 5Gs from coming within a two-and-a-half-mile radius of Logan Airport. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Counsel Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Clearly, I support Counselor McKenna and co-sponsor this motion. I just want to reiterate, you know, when, when these come in front of us, and I know that they don't come in front of us as much anymore, you know, most often, we've actually voted not in favor. And I don't want to be a hypocrite, you know, we all use cell phones, we all use the internet, and we all rely on this type of, these types of towers to support our internet activity. But I hate when someone says you can't say no, or we have no right to refuse things. You know, this is a great example of major airlines refusing to fly into Logan International Airport for 5G cell towers in and around the area. That tells you something. Something's wrong out there. So if the FAA is involved in it, and then we're told that the FCC, another government entity, tells us we can't say no, this is where, this is where I get, I get a little curious. So I'm glad that Counsel McKenna brought this up, and I'm happy to support her on this in hopes that we can get some more answers, and then at least give us the right to be able to choose whether or not we want these in our community and what types of harms they, you know, the, the risk versus reward they provide to our community, because that's something we do have to balance. I mean, we can't, we can't be total hypocrites, but we have to make sure that they're, they're positioned in the right areas, that they're, that we're putting the residents in less, at less risk. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Keith. Counsel Silvestri.
Yes, Counsel President. This is a great motion, Counsel McKenna. I too was wondering exactly, it was within two days of getting the phone call from the counsel president about us having to accept the 5G radio frequencies in the city, there was Delta Airline pilots that were on TV that were refusing to fly into certain airport, airports because of the, the 5G, and I was wondering how that was decided, what airports they were going to go into and not, and how the frequency of the one that we would have to accept on Broadway would affect the Logan Airport area.
Point of information, so these are, I think they're 550 airbuses, and they need two gates that, they hold like 550 or 600 people, and they're all coming from other different parts of the world, and they need two gates to, to dock. We're just starting to put the gates in. I think if you go down to JetBlue, it's an extended pot for international, and they're starting to bring in those airbuses, they're airbuses. What are they?
Terminal E.
Terminal E, yes. So, but Logan Airport didn't, they weren't on the list, and we have a hill that's above sea level. I don't know how big the hill is, but I mean, it's major, it's, it's in tiers, you know, four tiers of houses, and I've seen those airplanes just miss that hill. They come so close, I could see what they, what they're eating for snacks. That's how close they come, and I've seen them come in from Revere Beach and misjudge the height of the hill and almost slam into them. I really do believe, thank you, God, that we are, we've been very lucky. We've had planes, wheels land in Beauchamp. We've had a roof chimney hit with a plane, their wheels, we've had parts of airplanes in Beauchamp. We were lucky, we're lucky enough not to have a disaster, and I don't want to see a disaster happen. So we have to nip this in the bud. Thank you.
No further questions, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 22.
Suspension of rules. We have School Committee Man Kingston here to speak to number 29. It fits the will of the council.
We're already on the suspension, right? Yes.
So calendar item number 29, motion presented by. Motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor designate the walking path entrance connecting Coolidge Street and Gordon Road as pedestrian walking path. Further, that the mayor direct the DPW to ensure that the area is clearly marked as such and plowed properly so children can safely walk to school.
Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. As many of you know, that this, this is, there's an opening in the fence where I believe Glover Street connects with Gordon Road, and it's used primarily by the people that live in housing to cut through so they don't have to walk down Cushman Avenue. I just, I'm not sure about what we can label it as, but I would like to see it cleaned up a little bit, maybe some lines painted, something done there, and, and, you know, the DPW did a great job. I called them, they plowed it out. I want to give them all the credit in the world, but we've got to make sure it's kept clean so people can walk through. Thank you.
Name and address for the record.
John Kingston, 140 Winterbath.
Welcome, John.
Thank you. I saw the agenda, and I saw Counsel Cogliandro's motion. I just wanted to talk about sidewalks overall throughout the city. Unfortunately, due to the busing shortages, high school students have to walk up to two miles to get to school. That means they're crossing a number of streets to get to school, and based on my riding around the city, a lot of the crosswalks aren't passable. You can walk in the crosswalk where the street is, but when you're walking across the crosswalk, when you get to either side, there's a snowbank, and it's not necessarily the residents' fault. I think sometimes it's just the way the plow is done. I know my corner at my house is plowed in by the contracted plow, so it's difficult for me to clean that corner off so that kids can wa, I live right across from Immaculate Conception School, and it's difficult for people to walk around that area, and I just worry about a kid or even a senior citizen, anyone really walking in the, in a crosswalk, that all of a sudden, when they get to the end of the crosswalk, now they're in a snowbank, so now what? Walk along the street and possibly get hit. So just if, if the DPW, and I know they're busy and shorthanded, but if crosswalks in major areas could kind of be looked at, just to protect the citizens and the students that are walking. Thank you, and thank you for the latitude.
Counsel Fiore.
To Kingston's points, I agree. The DPW did yeoman's work in this past storm, and Mr. Argenzio should be credited for that. However, I think, you know, I had a resident call me, they got, 84 years old, got a $25 fine on one day, got a $25 fine on the next day, and when his son became aware of it, his son went over and shoveled him out. So Main Roads, you know, this was on Sargent Street, I think, rather than hiring more bean counters in City Hall, maybe we should hire an employee or two in Public Works that could operate a Bobcat. Just a suggestion.
Thank you for that suggestion, Counsel Fiore. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Next motion.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Counsel McKenna that the city council issue a certificate of appreciation to Hennessy Gomez, property manager of Broadway Towers. Hennessy has been a wonderful asset to the residents of Revere by assisting fire victims and those in need by providing housing at reasonable rates.
Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. This woman is an angel, and I'll hold my comments for when she comes up and receives her certificate. Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Councilors McKenna and Fiore that the mayor request the appropriate department to purchase sandbags in preparation for future storms for use by residents. Many residents reside in low-lying neighborhoods who would benefit from sandbags around their foundations to prevent flooding. I received several calls from residents requesting sandbags during the blizzard last weekend.
Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I received a number of calls during the storm. People were looking for sandbags, so I did call a couple of city officials, and Revere does not supply them. Other surrounding cities, they have sandbags. It was on, it was on the news. They give out sandbags, but Revere doesn't have them, and I just think for peace of mind for residents, I mean, I have some streets that flood constantly, constantly flooding, Pearl Ave, constantly flooding. So I think, you know, even if we give them peace of mind and say, go up to the city yard and pick up some sandbags, you can put them around your foundation and, and get less of, you know, flooding, I think that's, I think it would be great. And I also talked to Captain Fatuna, and he said that we could, we don't have to use the, the sand from the beach, we can use the sand from the back of North Gate Shopping Center where they used to, where they tried to do a highway or something, there's sand there. So they could, people could pick up their, pick up a bag, go there, pick up the sand or whatever, the city could do, fill the sandbags, whatever is easier. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counsel Fiore.
President, I think at least two-thirds of my ward is low-lying areas, and I was a little surprised to find out that we didn't have sandbags. And what I'm told, the bags themselves cost about 10 cents apiece. So again, I would like to see, being a coastal community, these be purchased in the interest of the public.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 24, motion presented by Councilors Rizzo and Serino that the mayor request Mastaut to widen the deceleration lane on Route 60, Squire Road, heading eastbound for entry into North Gate Shopping Plaza.
Counsel Fiore. Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel, I'm sorry, Counsel Rizzo.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would like to, at the outset, amend the motion. Thanks to my colleague to my right, Counsel Novoselsky, it is not to widen the deceleration lane, it's to lengthen it. And, and that, and that's something, again, this is something that I brought up about four years ago. Anybody that's familiar with the area that I'm talking about, of course Counsel Serino is, because he's the ward counselor down there, but as you're coming around Copland Circle on Route 60 heading east, you come up, and it's not all the time, but there are, there are enough times when you're coming up to the lights by Joe's Mobile there, where the traffic pulling into North Gate is now, there's not enough deceleration lanes, so they're out into the main lane, the, there's two lanes on Squire Road, and they're blocking traffic on one of those lanes. So it really backs it up all the way down. And DOT, I remember I put this motion in about four years ago, and at that time, the police chief came up here and said he was already in touch with DOT, and it was all set, and they were going to do it, and here we are, four years later, and it hasn't been done. That is an easy fix, and it's a big headache off the backs of people that travel in that area, because like I say, it's not all the time, but when it happens, it creates a real mess, and it's an easy fix. It's just chopping out some of that island there and lengthening that deceleration lane to allow more traffic to queue up to turn into North Gate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any questions? No questions, all in favor, all opposed? Oh, sorry, I didn't see him.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Serino.
Counsel Rizzo summed it up pretty, pretty well, so I just hope that we can take this and approve it. Thank you.
Okay. Maybe it's the mask. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Next motion.
Calendar item number 25, motion presented by Counselor Rizzo that the following amendment to the revised ordinances of the city of Revere be ordered to a public hearing, an ordinance amending the time requirements for the placement of trash for curbside collection.
Counsel Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Essentially, this, I don't think this would be a, a real heavy lift for the city council or the administration. Right now, as it stands, 12 months out of the year, you can put your trash out no earlier than 5:00 PM on the day before scheduled pickup. What I'm looking to do is during the winter months, when it gets darker earlier, for, you know, primarily senior citizens or people with disabilities that get concerned, there's black ice out there, as we can see out here now, if they can have some daylight, that they can put their trash out just a little bit earlier without fear of getting ticketed, I think that would go a long way to helping those people. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Couldn't agree more. This is going to get referred to a public hearing on February 28th. Next motion.
Calendar item number 26, motion presented by Counsel McKenna that the mayor be, oh, I'm sorry, did you?
I'm on that on Winklemark.
Okay. So calendar item number 26, motion presented by Counsel McKenna that the mayor be requested to utilize capital improvement stabilization funds to purchase a snow-melting machine for the DPW. Snow is only plowed and never removed in highly congested areas of the city. Removing snow from these areas is the most efficient way to free up on-street parking spaces and improve pedestrian safety and walkability after storms.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm going to withdraw this because I've received some new information that these machines, they're not environmentally sound, and they're not convenient, so they, they run on diesel fuel, and so they, they pollute a lot, so, thank you.
And we know how concerned you are with environment.
Yes.
The environment.
Yes, so thank you.
Mr. President? I, I apologize, I don't know parliamentary procedure if I can do this. If it's, if it's okay with Counsel McKenna, can I pick up that motion?
Counselor Serino, you can do whatever you want.
Can, sure. Mr. President, through you to the clerk, can I pick it up now, or would I have to file something?
You can do, you can put.
You can verbally, anyone can verbally amend it if they want.
If it's okay, if it's okay with the members, if I could verbally amend that to say that the mayor be requested to look into the feasibility of purchasing a snow-melting machine, because I'll say that I got many calls through the storm, which were taken care of by the DPW, and, and, you know, everyone was great working with the city, but because our city is so dense, and because our streets do become narrow in major snowstorms like this, many parking spots, many, you know, you go through the streets, the snowbanks are very high, and if other cities can, can use technology like this and use heavy machinery like this, I think, and no offense, and I, I'm an environmentalist as well, but... think, and no offense, and I, I'm an environmentalist as well, but I, I think that this would help the people of the city. So I, I would ask that we consider it and, again, doesn't mean that he has to purchase it, but just that, you know, I don't even know the, the prices of how much, you know, such equipment would cost, but that's why I would ask that he look into the feasibility of, of such a purchase. Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed to that motion? So ordered.
Calendar item number 30, motion presented by Councillor Silvestri, that the city council approve the following home rule, in act relative to term limits for the office of mayor, city council and school committee.
Councillor Silvestri.
Yes, Mr. President. So the, the rule I'm asking for us to adopt would be a term limit on all city council members. This would take effect only if the motion passes, so time already put as a council, you would, that would not be held against you. If you stayed through your term limit and decided you were going to run for mayor afterwards or whatnot, that again, you wouldn't be held against that. So it's, it's five terms, a total of 10 years for city council, five terms, a total of 10 years for school committee and three terms, a total of 12 years for the office of mayor. Thank you, Mr. President.
If there's no questions, I'm going to refer this to Legislative Affairs. Yes, it's going to go to committee. Thank you.
Calendar item number 31, motion presented by Councillor Silvestri, that the mayor be requested to provide all first responders in the city of Revere with $500 from ARPA funds for their committed service during, during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Mr. President, if we can just put this in Ways and Means, please.
Yeah. Ordered to Ways and Means.
Calendar item number 32, motion presented by Councillor Silvestri, that the city council award certificates of appreciation to the fifth grade peer leadership team for collecting winter gloves and hats for those in need.
Councillor Silvestri.
Mr. President, if we could just amend that to say the fifth grade peer leadership at the Paul Revere School, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed? As amended? So ordered.
Calendar item number 33, motion presented by Councillor Fiori, that the city council request the city solicitor to provide the city council with a legal opinion regarding the mayor's authority to allow multiple members of boards and commissions' terms to expire and continue to serve without confirmation of the city council.
Mr. President, very concerning that dozens and dozens and dozens of members on, of boards and commissions are serving on expired terms without the ability of the city council to confirm or deny. The information I have been able to obtain, what's available, some of it was not available, but I call your attention to the Board of Assessors. The entire board is on expired terms. One, February of 2018. The second, June of 2020. The third, November of 2019. Serving on expired terms. I call your attention to the planning board. One, two, three, four, five, six, March 9th, 2017. Another member, March 10th, 2016. Another member, March 9th, 2017. Another member, March 9th, 2019. Another 2/8, 2021. And another 12/15, 2016. Now, I recognize there have been a handful of appointments. These are the records as of January 11th of this year. So there have been a handful of appointments and mostly new appointments, with the exception of a few, which doesn't speak to the failure of the administration to reappoint. Zoning Board of Appeals, one member, June 22, 2020. Conservation Commission, and we had an entire board resign. And then on top of that, several members after that resigned. So we're looking at, I was glad to see there were two were reappointed tonight, where according to this, we have one from April 2020 expiration and July 2020 expiration. Not as, I shouldn't say no less significant, but the Library Board, we have people expiring December 2019, November 2019, January 18, November 19, January of 18. Disability Commission, including the, the director, November 14, 2019, and another member, November 14, 2019. Human Rights Commission, I'm showing November 14, 2021, and October 5, 2021. The Cultural Council, I'm showing November 27, 2020, and November 14, 2019, members having expired. So, Mr. President, I find it alarming, I, there is no reason for it that I can think of, other than the ability to remove them if you don't like a vote they took. So this is ridiculous. I think we need an opinion from the legal department as to the mayor's authority to do such. I don't think this council should be abdicating its authority. These members are appointed, they're not anointed for life. How do the members feel? How do the members of these commissions feel, sitting there with a lack of confidence in, by not being reappointed? So again, Mr. President, I would ask for unanimous consent. Any other, it's dereliction of duty not to.
Councillor, thank you, Councillor Fiori. Councillor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I, I, you know, it's, when you hear the number of people and the number of people that are just holdovers, it's, it's incredible. I, I think it's a, I think it's a real, and I always try to put myself in a person's position, any one of us up here could have been a board, sitting on one of these boards or commissions. And how disrespectful is it to just, your term expires and you just hear crickets, you hear nothing? And you just kind of keep showing up to a meeting until maybe that one meeting when they say, "Oh, by the way, you're not needed anymore." I mean, either appoint or don't reappoint. I mean, that's the reason you have terms. They give you a term, it's three years, it's five years, it's, it's whatever. But you just don't let them go on and on and on and not know, especially the Board of Assessors, I mean, wait, those are full-time jobs. That's not like sitting on the, you know, pick another commission that you talked about, right? These are people who go to work every day, they don't know, you know, they don't have a term? That's outrageous. So I don't even know if this requires a legal opinion. We should, we should be, I mean, I'm supporting the motion, Councillor, but I think we should be supporting all of these people who hold these, who hold these positions, we should be supporting them and saying, "Hey, have some respect. If you want this person reappointed, reappoint them. If you don't, then let them know. But don't let them keep showing up, not knowing where they stand. That's just not fair to them." Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. And this concludes the February 7th council meeting. Our next meeting will be February 28th. Thank you.